Good morning. On the College Day, the trustees pay out after the college. Appreciate your time. Steve here, your interest in the policy work is picking up for our system. Three days has been all present to stay after. Great support we get to send along to stay after your needs. Twenty square meters spread out to the garden.
None of those I can appreciate, but like.
Three million dollars.
Yeah, I can go do that.
So George, I really enjoy looking at all rights. Therefore, if there's any, any encouragement, cries, any consolation.
Of love, any fellowship of the spirit, any affection, any compassion. Make my joy complete by being of the same mind, the same intent, same spirit, same love. And do nothing through selfish ambition or vain conceit, but in humility regard others as more important than yourself. And regard the interest of others as more important to yourself. We pray with heavenly bother, we just do pray. As your servants, that we would do your work, that we represent Christ in our lives and show the good that we can do in our system. We pray for our leaders, we pray for our leadership in the state, our leadership in the nation. We pray for the stewardship that each of us have to do good and to help advance your good works. We thank you for this great country. We thank you for the men and women who served to defend it. We pray for those who have suffered at the hands of terrorism, tragedies and natural tragedies, Lord. We know that not one person would escape your attention and your care. We pray for your loving care and comfort for those families. We thank you for this time we have together. We pray for the wisdom for our leaders to have. We thank you for the strength you give us. Thank you for grace and for the forgiveness of sins. And I pray this in Jesus' name, amen.
Thank you, God. Please, this recording. To honor our flag, our country, everyone please stand or wait for me. Jesus is the Lord.
The legal allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation under God indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And Secretary, will you call the votes? President.
President.
President. Frank Hartwell.
President.
Crystal Brown.
President.
Milton Davis.
President.
Chuck Smith.
President.
Blake McAnally.
President.
Harry Spad Hunter. Governor Kay Irving. Chairman.
Thank you very much. Item three, the item for rather approval of the agenda. Each member has received this agenda in advance. The meeting has had a chance to look it over. At this time, I'll entertain a motion to approve the agenda.
Motion.
There's been a motion by Mr. Vegas and a second.
Second.
Second by Mr. Pantrill. Any discussion, any changes to the agenda? There being known, we move to vote. All those in favor of approving the agenda, submit it. Please raise your hand. Anyone opposed? Agenda approved. Item five, approval of the minutes of the May tenth, twenty seventeen meeting. Once again, we receive, each member has received these minutes and advanced the meeting. Have a chance to review them. At this time, I will entertain a motion to approve the minutes.
Motion.
A motion by Mr. Boyd and a second by Mr. Caldwell. Any discussion, any changes to the minutes? There being known, we move to vote. All those in favor of approving the minutes of the May tenth, twenty seventeen meeting? Please raise your hand. Anyone opposed? The minutes are approved. Item six, public comment. No one signed up for public comment. Okay, item seven, our action items. First is renovation project of Chastain Student Center for the Taylor Campus for Calvin Community College. This item was presented at our work session in May and also has the recommendation of the Facilities and Infrastructure Committee. At this time, I'll entertain a motion.
Motion that we approve.
Motion by Ms. Brown to approve. There's a second. Second by Mr. Smith. Any discussion? There being known, we'll move to question. All those in favor of approving the renovation project of Chastain Student Center for Calvin Community College? Please raise your hand. Anyone opposed? Motion carries. Item seven, day two, which was not on the work session last month, but I think it's been explained very well. All the information's been submitted to the board trustees concerning transfer of radio equipment and gas to State Community College. At this time, I'll entertain a motion. Motion approved by Mr. Davis. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Pantrill. The station. As we all receive this information, this is unused, unused radio equipment. The program's no longer ongoing there, gas and state. Sold the things, equipment less than a hundred dollars, but still technically the part of the action. Any questions, any discussion?
Did have a question about the license and Mr. Ryan did send that information. I appreciate him sending that to us.
Any other questions going about the program, license situation? Any other discussion? There being known, move to question. All those in favor of transfer of radio equipment, gas to State? Please raise your hand. Anyone opposed? Motion carries. Item three, request of our funds for purchase of the building to support fund for a training center at Devil State. Mr. Brown, maybe make some remarks on this greatly.
Yeah.
We've had some changes in all of the items. Well, in this also way of work session. I think President Okafor okay, but the rest of the deal, it's a different matter.
That's all right. Appropriate. The only, the change since the action item first went out is that the rate on this loan will be taxable rather than tax exempt. Public, private partnerships, as you know, this is an arrangement with Allen Power Company in part. And that, the tax code is not quite caught up with the concept of public, private partnerships. And it doesn't like private use and private interests in publicly financed property. So we have to do this at least initially on a taxable basis. There's every chance that that arrangement may change enough that we'll be able to do on a taxing basis later. But at the moment, it'll be on a taxable basis. So the interest rate that was in your initial action item was two point six five, I believe. The, the actual rate initially would be four point oh eight percent. The principal hammerization is the same as the one before, nothing else is changed.
Or the debt services were higher.
The debt service will be somewhat higher because of the higher interest rate, but not, not a whole lot, but somewhat higher.
Any? And this is to, this is on the H V A C facility that we're in partnership with Allen Power.
Right, and then the, and then the other part is a matching, a matching brand community, which I'm not as familiar with, but.
They're active.
That's the other one. Yeah, two projects, both, one's an acquisition, one's an extension.
Any other questions? There being, we have a motion to approve this. Motion by Mr. Davis is a second. Second by Mr. Caldwell. Any further discussion? There being none, all those in favor of item seven, eight, three, the request of our funds for purchase of the building to support matching funds for training center at Devil State? Please raise your hand. Anyone opposed? Motion carries. Section eight, action items. Eight, eight, one, recommendation regarding adoption of series seven hundred policies. I'll entertain a motion now to approve this recommendation for the adoption of the series seven hundred. Motion to approve this. Motion by Mr. McAnally, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Brown. Okay, discussion. Mr. Pantrill, do you have any?
Do not. Odds from the. Odds, certainly, thoroughly, you've discussed the major differences as appropriate. We recommend that the odds be adopted as submitted.
Let me make one comment. In these offices, there was some discussion. Final answer. Scholarship, according to scholarships, requiring that the U.S. citizens report to the state of the scholarship. That is a part of the. Think there's, this information's not able, maybe we were not doing that, but that's a part of the policies. Any other comments, questions? Mr. Pantrill, thanks for the word. To everyone that's on the policy committee, thank you for your work and your time and all of this. Appreciate that very much. We'll move to vote. All those in favor of approving the series seven hundred policy, please raise your hand. Anyone opposed? Item eight, eight, one, to approve. Item eight, eight, two, this is a recommendation regarding adoption of close policy eight of four point oh two, the student aid program, institutional waivers. Is there a motion?
No.
Or a motion, second.
Second.
Second, Mr. Pantrill. Okay, any discussion? Why, just replies that to. Any further discussion? All those in favor of a motion to approve the close policy eight of four point oh two, please raise your hand. Anyone opposed? Motion carries. Item eight, eight, three, sale of Ozark National Guard Armory property improvements, Black Enterprise. Is this a name? This is. But it is, this is, this is a partnership that is. Let me make a great explanation for this. Here, this, this property was purchased by Enterprise to give it out this year. For five years ago, so I have no idea why. We have sold his own account, there, those aren't, had a model. That is desperate, didn't prepare, really, to love. And this period, has some positive senses of the period. Our, what he does by transfer of those, it provides that Dale County Board of Education, just across the island, of this process. Students at Dale County have been privileged to build the training programs, the skills training at the center in Ozark, which is the Ozark City Board of Education. Those programs have pulled up with those students, so Dale County students have nowhere, none of their students have the skills training program. So this will allow the Dale County Board to take this facility, rehab it, and turn it into a skills training program. And we can do, do a lot with those students in those. So it's assets used that way, it's period, it has to. If we had money to do rehab, I'd do it on our campus before I do it somewhere else. So it is some asshole layer of old heart is very supportive of this move because it's one of the first things you see when you come to sell. I agree with you, so that's, that's your process. Thank you, Chancellor. Is there a motion to approve the sale of the Ozark National Guard Armory? Motion by Mr. Smith, is there a second? Second by Mr. Davis. Any further discussion? Chancellor, thank you for that explanation. There being no discussion, we move to vote. All those in favor of approving the sale of Ozark National Guard Armory property, approve it, please raise your hand. Anyone opposed? Motion carries. Our last action item is rescheduling of our September thirteenth meeting to September sixth, twenty seventeen. This is due to conflict of the week of the thirteenth. Is there a motion to approve this change? Motion by Mr. Davis, is there a second? Second by Ms. Boyd. Any questions? I think this is getting explained here. I hope it fits in with everybody's schedule. All those in favor of this change, September eighth, please raise your hand. Anyone opposed? Motion carries. Item nine, personnel. Personnel change. Ten, ten, four. Please. I'll, I'll. Yes, sir. We are the chosen one in some ways. And I say this not regretfully at all. As you well know, the legislature passed legislation creating a committee to begin the process of looking at performance based budget. Now, when you say that, a lot of people in our system gets very concerned, and they should be very concerned. Because it is an important issue. But it's not a new issue. I hate to put it in this term, but reality is that we in Alabama and the community college system and the state is behind the curve on looking at this kind of issue. It is my intent and that of my staff, as well as many of the people in the system, to do everything we possibly can do to make this a meaningful exercise. And when I say meaningful, what would make a win to me would be to know that we are utilizing all of our resources in the best manner possible. That results in instruction to students, both academic and skills training, is enhanced. And that's where our money is going as much as it possibly can. I've spoken prior to this time about declining resources. And if you can make sense out of what's going on in D.C. right now and looking at the budget process, and if you walk away from looking at that thinking that the feds are going to bell us out problems because they're going to expand, expand the resources that we have access to, then I need to talk with you. Because I'm behind the curve if that's the case. I don't think we can count on that happening, even though I know that at one point, there was a, a, a hand extended to the H B C U's as suggesting that resources were going to be increased. I hope that's the case, but I'm still not convinced of that either. We have and are beginning the process to do an inventory of facilities and equipment in our system. As I travel around the state and I go on many of our campuses, and I find a lot of facilities that I feel good about. But I also find that many times the ones I'm shown are the ones I should feel good about. But then when I begin to travel throughout the system and look at other facilities, we oftentimes are asking students to come from an up to date secondary education facility and attend a nineteen fifties and sixties model facility that has been less than adequately maintained. It's our effort to put together an inventory of buildings and equipment because we don't want to duplicate services unnecessarily. But I feel that it's important for me to provide this board some leadership in looking at how we can begin to address the capital needs in the system. I think we're negligent if we don't tell the legislative body that we have some needs and in a way that demonstrates to them that it's real. So as we begin working toward trying to collect information, it always makes each of the colleges, I won't say each of the colleges, some of the colleges nervous. And it's true, it's a little different approach. But the only way I know to put together a system wide plan is to have a set of information that tells us what the system is doing and what kind of condition is it. Many instances, the, in fact, I met with a president this week, and they have two buildings that the H V A C is not working in. And so I begin to ask questions, well, how long has it been since there was maintenance done on the facilities? And then I ask the question, well, how old are they, how old is the equipment? Well, the building was built in nineteen sixties. And the equipment is still the same equipment. Those of you that are in the construction world or any of us know that that's a little long shot to expect that to continue to work. So I have an interest in finding out the condition that exists and then begin to look at a way that we can begin to address the capital needs on some kind of programmed, consistent pattern. And I think that's a part of what I should be doing and my staff should be doing. I would hope you would support that. Now, as, every time we ask questions of the colleges, they all think we're getting ready to do something ridiculous or scary maybe, or maybe different. That's probably what it really is. Maybe a little different than what was done in the past. And I solicit their support as we move toward working with it. The same thing holds true with equipment. Many of our skills training programs that we are trying to operate, operate with equipment that just is not the most current. And, no, it's, we're, we're not living in the world of the sixties and seventies. The equipment in the manufacturing business is changing on a rapid basis. It's being upgraded, it's being improved, and the process has changed. And unless we have access to that kind of equipment, then we are behind the curve in training our, our students. So that's some of the things we're looking at. The other is that issue that we've talked about over and over and over. But we are going, we must provide you as board members, if you are going to meet the mandate that's been placed upon you and us to be efficient, to utilize the resources that are available to us in the best way possible, we have to know what's going on. And I think as we move forward to working together as a system, then we can begin to address those issues. Software is an issue. It's been an issue for years and it's going to continue to be an issue until we address that in some kind of organized fashion. I don't, I don't want to, but I, I want everyone to understand that our mission is to open our doors wide. Try to get as many students as we can, whatever age they may be, to come to our buildings. And then let's talk with them about what we can do to help them improve their opportunities to make an effective living for their household. That's really the way I see the community college mission, more so than any other organization in education. And again, I would tell you, if you look around the state and evaluate the students themselves as they leave, many of our high schools are not prepared to go out and perform in a job at the level that they should be able to. We must begin to address that issue, seek those students out and do everything we possibly can to make every person that is willing to put forth the effort and willing to take the initiative, that we offer them an opportunity about, this is one way that you can step forward and improve your life and improve your community and improve the state. Folks, it may just be me, I don't think so. But I think if you do an assessment today of where we are as a state in the world of education, you would see the need to step up to the plate at a level that we probably haven't been doing in the past. And I just want to call upon everyone involved in our organization and our system to take serious measure of what's going on around you and work with us as we develop a plan. I don't have one ready. I don't have all the answers. We have a lot of people working in this state in systems that have a lot of good answers and can make a great contribution. But we as a system must pull together and do everything we can to be the leader in this state and prove to the policymakers of this state that we are serious about what we're doing. We're making a lot of progress. We are doing a lot of good things in our schools. But we've got to tell that story at a different level. And we've got to spread the good work and the good news at a different level than we've been doing in the past. We're committed to that. And I just, I just want to kind of set the stage because we're going to be asking this board to support us with initiative to change a lot of this. And as we go forward, we're going to need the support of everyone in our system to help us succeed as we step up to the plate and say, okay, you, your legislative body, the governor, the governor's office has asked us to lead the charge. I want to lead that charge. I think we're better if we're out ahead of the crowd and taking the initiative to address the needs in education in this state at a level that we've never taken. It's, it's a serious issue. It's one we must be totally committed to. And I know that our people in our system are ready to do that. I just want to make it known that we are trying to do everything we can do to help maximize the use of the resources as it relates to providing services for the people who need it in this state. It's not to be aggravating, it's not to be too inquisitive, it's to be, we must gather the information in an orderly manner so that we can know what to do in the future. So as we go forward, I, I will tell you, just as a matter, because I know it's, it's interest, I, I committed to this board that we would not have any interim presidents by Thanksgiving. We don't get off a faster pace than with that. I think you've got something to look forward to. I think you've got something to look forward to next month. So just as a, that's kind of a, I, I probably didn't need to announce that, but I do want you to know, we've been working, we have interviewed people, board members have been involved, and we're serious about filling our vacancies with people who will join in the crowd with us and move forward. So, Mr. Chairman, I, I don't know that I've delivered the message the way I wanted to, but I want to express the seriousness of the need for everyone in our system to join hands, and let's move forward in a common way that we can all succeed in fulfilling our mission.
Chancellor, I think you've expressed that quite clearly, and I think the board appreciates your leadership in all different fronts that you're moving in. Thank you so much. Any, any comments or any questions for the Chancellor and the board?
I just appreciate the vision, I mean, I think all of us see the challenges in our community. We, in our community home, with respect to product coming from the high schools to us, I think the secondary school also should challenge they have. It's, it's a huge step forward, and we, we need to be as ready as we can.
Also, the, the inventory analysis is very critical, because we can't operate a system, we don't know as a system what all we have, what is antiquated, you know, what resources do, do, do you want? And I know that that's going to seem somewhat painful and appear maybe somewhat intrusive, but it's not, it's just so that we can have that great resource here at the system office. Just that you and we, on the business and industry, that we can deliver, so I think that's a way we can deliver.
Chancellor is probably the most patient person I've ever met. Now, I gotta add a little humor to this. I want to thank you for your direction, experience, and the ability to get it right. I appreciate it.
I want to add one other thing to, you know, to the presidents, you know, we, we probably are going to ask a lot of you. I think we as board members recognize that for a long time, we really probably haven't functioned as a system as, as we might to have. And this board is very interested in doing that, and, and that requires additional input. You've already seen requests from us for building programs to consolidate information, provide it in a similar way. As far as financial reporting, I think you'll see some things in the future on how you make financial reports such that we, even though we have different software, as we get the same information and have the ability at our level and a board level to evaluate things accordingly, we are traditionally responsible, so we need that data, we need it, we need it, you know, in a way that allows us to use something that's real, realistic. So we will ask of you, as we move along through this process, even to standardize the way we do things across all the colleges so that we in the system office and the board in particular can use that data and use it quickly. Anything two, three, four, six months in arrears doesn't do us a lot of good.
Well, my, this is another chancellor said, let's share some good views, and I would like to share some good views. Lawson State graduated their first class from the work, environmental workforce program. I believe they had received a grant from EPA about two weeks ago, they graduated seventeen students. They had their certifications in Ocean Nineteen Ten Training, ASWAP training. And there were several companies that even participated, not participate, but attended, you know, a real fair, early that morning. And it was just great to see the students, most of them were, and their families were there, their children were there, and they had really improved their resume, you know, so they're going to be more marketable. And the companies recognized that, and they were very appreciative. So I just want to congratulate Lawson State, it's good news, seventeen students again graduated with certifications, and, and just continue to, you know, have successes like that, which we are. Let's, let's share the good news, let's advertise it.
And we have, we're all on that.
Yeah, we do, we really do.
Thank you for sharing that. Anything else? I appreciate the board members contributing on, on all these different, these different areas. But Chancellor, great leadership, can only be, be most productive with a team effort. And we appreciate the, the great team and staff that the Chancellor assembled here in the central office, as well as the presidents and their staff. We, we appreciate your hard work, and we just look forward to working with you in the months and the years ahead. Anything else from the board? We have the, I believe, President's Summer Conference, it starts this weekend. We wish all the presidents well on that, and a productive and successful conference. We'll reconvene at one fifteen, and the president's, will be in here. We'll reconvene for the work session today at one fifteen. We may, or we may have an extended lunch, so we may start, we'll start one fifteen or later, based on that. And our next regular board meeting is, is Ju-, the July board meeting is July twelfth. Anything else? I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. Motion by Mr. Davis is second. All those in favor say aye. We stand adjourned.